Mr. Chairman, we're recording.
Excellent. Evening. I'd like to open the July 9th, 2024 Bethel Planting and zoning Commission meeting. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the God in the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Start by introducing the commissioners. Sorry, that on the table?
Andy Thorson, Commissioner.
Your colleague alternate, Michael Coslowski, Commissioner. Paul Shamen, Chair.
Kitty Grant, Vice Chair.
I am, I am.
Esther McAniff, Plenary Director.
We also have Mr. Legner, Bob Legner joining up.
Can't hear you, Bob.
Bob Legner, Committer.
Excellent, thank you. And staff with us tonight?
Amanda Martinez, Reporting Secretary.
Dave McCollum, Land Use Coordinator.
Excellent. We're going to move right into the public hearing for continued public hearing for Chastina Animal Health LLC 25A Turkey Plain Road.
Good evening, all. For the record, Dynas Provacus Professional Act here, our talent mirror group of applicants. At our last, at the last time that we met, we had just been received comments from the reviewer chair. Addressing those comments, including the light engineering things, lighting. And a question asked about hours of operation.
And that's been answered.
Which, which is been answered, submitted for the record. And we just received comments from the health department as well. But for, for the most part, if they're, if they're like the engineering comments should be straightforward. To address issues at hand, I'm happy to answer any questions if you might have. I can provide patience to allow us to respond to comments.
That you have anything?
No, I spoke with the contractor in regards to lighting. I'm not that concerned with lighting at this point. I think it's something that we can handle in-house, similar to other businesses that are located in residential zones. And knowing what the needs might be, I think we can address that prior to the issuance of a building.
Was there a lighting plan already received?
No, there wasn't. Lighting was discussed because I had brought it up with concerns of, you know, how's it done?
Any other commission questions? Bobby, anything?
Bob is away from keyboard at the moment, Mr. Chairman.
I see that.
He's lighting, pulling out his birthday. No, I didn't see the comments yet.
Comments from engineering or from health? So, the health department's comments we just received this evening.
Okay.
And I will tell you. You know, Laura is very thorough with anything that she addresses. And I will just tell you, you know, it's, it's pretty standard in reference to checking two items to double check. But it's her last paragraph is where I always go when I'm looking for something. It says in summary, Bethel Health Department has no objection to approval of the site plans for addition to the existing veterinary hospital by the Bethel Planting and Zoning Commission with conclusion of the conditions and provisions noted.
The dumpster.
I will tell you that she, she wants to check water supply to make sure periodic water testing is done, the dumpster is shown on the drawing. The garbage facility and things like that. Privacy fencing, sound control, corners, grading the train, things that are addressed by the engineer. And subject system. She's just going to review that with me.
What does the ad here come up with?
I have looked at them and I do have, and they are in the drive.
Oh, I didn't see.
Did you get a chance to look at it?
Oh, yes.
I, there was a few. SLR's last, last paragraph and there's, they're looking for responses to the commissions to address each of the additional and revised plan and street reports and calculations should be submitted by the applicant. So when I do get something like that, it, it usually means that they want to have more provisions in writing, things like that. Be more comfortable with having that writing versus closing the hearing. I mean, I think if we close the hearing, we'll deal with this. Because nothing, none of these items are asked, you know, they're, none of the items that are presented. I'm so, as I'm losing my voice, my mind. Do you understand what I'm saying? They can't be overcome. All right. I think SLR is more comfortable having revised drawings before they okay it or they bless it. Because it's technical in nature and most of the items can be addressed with revised drawings. My recommendation is that we can close the hearing.
Any other commission comments, questions? Open up the public.
Um, correct. Not name and address the whole town. Penny Kessler, 22 Spring Hill Lane. My only concern is safety for drivers that are coming onto 53 either straight off from, I guess that's Nashville. Or probably where, but making the right turn onto 53 to go back into Bethel, if you were to do that. Or drivers making a left onto Nashville. I would just be concerned about the safety of cars going in and out. I don't think there's anything to be done about it. But I just thought the commission should be clear of the concern.
I did for many years, well, no, I have all that.
I, I know that area well.
No, I, I was embarrassed.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, Kitty.
Legner, do you have any comments or concerns, questions?
Bob, you're muted.
You're muted, Bob.
Everything okay?
All right, with that, I will, without motion, close the public hearing.
You can close it. Chairman, you can declare the public hearing.
Declare this public hearing closed. Thank you. All right.
I believe this is the total done of show. It's a one hour show.
Into the public hearing for ECD Realty LLC 22 Stony Hill Road.
At the last meeting, you opened the public hearing by reading the legal notice. This is a continuance of that. I believe tonight's meeting was a period of presentation to the applicant in regards to the site plan. I remind the meeting that there is active site plan, booth site plan for this. Site plan is located in Blue Bull Drive. And it shows a larger condition of the convenience store, things of that nature. And also, the most important aspect that has been removed is the drive through. There is no drive through associated with this. It's strictly a convenience store with gas stations. I did ask, I did verify that there are sidewalks on the property. And they do show sidewalks there, but at the time when this was originally approved, decorative, our, our street lamps were not required. So we won't be asking for the street lamps to continue along Route 6 as part of any decision that we're making. That is the only change that really has occurred since the time of this approval in revised plan that we see in front.
Publication cards, this is to joiners. Thanks again, Dynas Provacus Professional Act here with our talent mirror group here of the applicant. Proposed modification to and/or reapproval to the site plan, this gas station located in part of Hollyville. Stony Hill Road. This is 22 Stony Hill Road. It's a 105 acre parcel land developed in their residence. Staff have noted, we had gained a previously, previous approval of food efficiency and food D O T for a gas station. One hundred square foot gas station with four dispensers, eight fuel positions, as, as well as a drive through of the property. The applicant has asked to be modified by the drawings to the green where the drive through element of the plan is eliminated. So David, if you could go to the site plan, please. Get that sheet up. One more. There we go. Thank you, David. So as you look at the drawing, on the upper left corner of the drawing is where the proposed convenience store will be situated. You will note that the building is a little odd shaped on the corner on Hollyville Road. There's a little notch taken out of it. And that's because of setback requirements. I believe at one point in the beginning, we had gained the local zoning board of appeals for the positioning of the building. So the location of the building has not changed from what was previously approved and respects setbacks, actually approved. The, the other shaded portion, kind of the long skinny portion, that gets a good point, on the property is the proposed canopy of the fueling islands. These fueling positions are located on either side of these darker spots, as you see on your drawings. Those darker spots are actually fuel dispensers, the canopies on either side, canopy posts on either side, as you would see in a typical gas station. The fuel islands on this particular plan have changed a little bit from what was previously approved. As on the previous approval, we had the dispenser islands running basically parallel with the canopy. I would say similar to what's in Costco, where you've got parking, excuse me, fueling islands in Rome. The client has requested that the islands be canceled a little bit, with about a 60 degree angle, to provide for better access and clearer visibility. So that when somebody fuels, they pull into a fueling position and they can scoot out without having to pass a whole bunch of other people fueling. So it lends for a little bit better traffic flow. As proposed, the site has 20 parking spaces, 13 up against the building and seven toward the rear, plus an additional eight spaces that would recognize the fuel dispensers. So we'll have in total 28 places where people can park to gain access to not only the gasoline, but also to items served at the, sold at the convenience store. Similar to the previously approved plan, we do have a trash enclosure and loading space located in the northern property line. Just before you would access out of the site.
I missed that.
I'm sorry. So.
Go ahead.
I, I was pointing out that similar to the previously approved plan, we have a trash enclosure located in this location. It's conveniently located to the door, side door to the building. And probably intense, small property anyway, so not, not a far distance to go. As with the previous approval, the plan calls for site access coming in from Stony Hill Road, from both directions. You can access from the north and south, or east and west. However, egress, leaving the site, you're restricted to a right turn only onto Stony Hill Road. And that's because of the positioning to the top of the site. We do have on Hollyville Road though, a full access driveway, you can turn right and left, in and out of the site. As was required on the previous approval, there will be some road improvements.
Could you enlarge those? Because I think the commission would be interested in that. The corner, David, could you enlarge the corner of the intersection of Route 6 and Benedict, please?
Yeah, so right now, the intersection comes out to a sharper point. And Hollyville Road is a bit narrower. So what is required, or was required by DOT and this commission, was an improvement to this intersection. So we'll be pulling the corner back, providing a nice gentle radius or softer radius, turning from Holy, Stony Hill Road onto Hollyville Road. And Hollyville Road will be widened a, a bit to provide better traffic flow on the site. There will also be some restriping of Stony Hill Road, as well as Hollyville Road, as requested by the DOT previously. And as was designed by the director of the chair for the property.
Anyone that's familiar with that intersection, there's an infamous pole that is sticks out like a sword flower. And that isn't proposed, to be fair.
No, just, this is part of that.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
So David, if you can scroll to the next drawing, please. This is our grading in the utility plant. The site is relatively flat, kind of going downhill as you go to the north. So the topography falls away as you go from Stony Hill Road down towards the back of the site. We will continue to utilize municipal sewer and public water that's available to the site. As you'll note on this property, similar again to the previously approved plans, we do have a, a small storm drainage system located to the north of the proposed building. And then a larger storm drainage, storm water management system located to the east and west of, of the site. Storm water management systems, although similar to what was previously approved, they've been upgraded based on the new regulations. They fully compliant with the new regulations. David, if you could scroll to the next page, please. Landscaping plan, again, similar to what we saw previously approved on, on the site. And designed to make a statement on, on this portion of the road as you enter from kind of the, from, from one section of Stony Hill Road. Up into this, up into the eastern portion of Stony Hill Road. But a robust landscape plan is proposed. And I noted on our drawing, as I was reviewing today, that we did make reference to existing decorative lights. But that's a, a mislabeled. I don't think there are existing lights there, but I.
No, there aren't. But I apologize.
No, I don't think that they're there. But I do recall during the prior application, the lights were a new thing. And I think we had, we had to the plan, but just little specs and the lighting consultants, you know, to pick up on those decorative lights. So they have to, they need to put in the light. Yeah, so that they, they want to. So there's just. On Stony Hill Road.
Oh, okay.
You've got six lights proposed here. I will have to set them back a little bit off here. Because it's just the, so they're not as close to the north as I have said, but. Your proposed, your proposed lighting consultants, follow those provided as well. David, I, I think you might have the building elevations, though they would not be necessarily in our drawing set. I think they came separately.
How about these?
They, those, those look like them. Thank you so much, David. Yeah, so.
You're welcome.
So the.
If you need the elevations, one of them are.
So again, similar to, similar to the previously approved building, the architect has modified the building a little bit. To the extent that this minor peak is now centered over the center position doors on the building. On the previous approval, I believe we had two peaks as there were two entrances, as there were two separate shops considered at the time. There was going to be a convenience store element and possibly sort of a, either donut shop or, or like a hamburger.
I thought.
Check, checkers or something. But, but there were a couple of tenants that were proposed. It's similar to the prior plan. There is a cupola at the top to give it a little bit of colonial flair. Other than that, glass storefront, which would be the upper left portion of the building. That's what you can see as you're driving, let's say, pro big wide toward the Amber. That's the face that you would see. And then of course, on the upper right corner is the side of the building that you would see from, directly from Stony Hill Road. The lower left is, as you would see it from Hollyville Road. The lower right is, as you would see it from, I guess also, the Hollyville Road, which you kind of, kind of look at it from an angle.
You know, where, where this is a big, big pieces, you know. Like this is along Stony Hill.
Yeah. But that, actually that.
I mean, a long.
Yeah, it's a long Hollyville Road. And if you want to go back to the landscape plan, is that the quest? Or that's the question.
Well, you'd mentioned, I think I know where Diane's going. You'd mentioned when the robust landscaping area would create coming up Stony Hill and it's a prominent corner. You know, you're still going to see the backside of this building, it's going to melt. And I, I understand there's back in the house things there, so windows probably aren't viable options. Maybe taking into consideration mimicking that front gable on the back or something, just to break out, yeah, it's going to be a larger.
Sign that says Exxon or whatever.
Well, you have on your sign, I saw your smiling sign there, but.
We can certainly ask.
Even smaller dormers or something, just to see what it looks like. It's just an opinion, but, okay. I agree with Diane that it's a big, playing campus right now.
It's hard to press the other.
I understand completely, but had those, you're, you're facing, you know, almost all sides are exposed. Like you think about the one further down Route 6, the back of it, the sides are hidden.
Yeah.
You know, you're, you're out here in the open. And I think the plan's great, but you know, the building itself, I think we could, we could use a little bit of.
I think, I think on the previous plan, we had things hidden, buildings sheltered with order boards and pre-ord maintenance such as that. We can have the architects look into it, perhaps take your suggestions to heart.
I think you could do a lot with landscaping.
That too. It could be, you know, along that back part.
Because it is, you do have a robust, robust landscaping plan for the front. But I mean, you know, just using a combination of schmucks and fergs and everything like that.
It doesn't. I mean, I don't know what. HPL, they are hydrangea or something. So those are going to maybe get five feet tall.
My problem right here, I'm trying to.
Yeah.
And other than that, I'm here to answer questions that you might have. Glad too that even though we had previously, from the district, that the DOT, they had made comments prior to our session. We've lost back and forth DOT.
Was there anything changed? Have they changed it at all?
It was, it was little things, little things. But again, nothing, nothing major, just. Okay, I think, I think we had to extend the desseparation, like for striking Stony Hill Road.
Stony Hill Road was a big part of this.
Yeah, yeah. We wanted that to cause for the intersection.
Right. If you say anything else, I mean, I just want to make it clear.
I, I don't think at this point, no.
I did notice, talking about that corner, I mean, we have the sidewalks going there, which is nice. You know, your, your ramp's coming up. There's no provisions for crosswalk going across the other side of Hollyville Road or towards Benedict Road.
We, we were not asked to incorporate that by the DOT, we have provisions for aggregate access. So that should be the year or something. At, at least our side is.
I'm just thinking about, you know, what's approved to be built on Benedict, people walking down, maybe go get a gallon of milk or something. Trying to cross Route 6.
It's pretty scary.
Right.
It's going to be similar to the intersection of Hollyville and Route 6.
Yeah.
Down there. For whatever reason, DOT does not want to institute the use of sidewalks.
Okay.
At intersections on Route 6. And hopefully, the Director of Public Works is working on that. I've exhausted all my resources.
No, I understand.
Working with the state is extremely nice, nice and good challenge. Yes.
No, I know, but what do we have? They don't even look at it until we approve it.
And the light departments, they're just going to strike the hard, asphalt.
Are you going to eliminate trucks in here, which is far?
Um, the turning radio for the site allow for fuel delivery trucks. So you can get fuelers, delivery trucks in and out of the site without, obviously. So, sort of company, let's say, a truck or maybe a U P S type truck. I don't know.
It's not neat for.
What, what the mix is for this type of, but I think it's.
Gas or diesel?
At this point, I'm not sure if they have these. We do have two underground storage tanks.
Just two?
Two. And the gas station side of the. Two, and the gas station, either they, um. One is high test, the other one is, is regular, and you can let them, Spencer. Or sometimes if desired, they can. Throw our tanks and double barriers inside, so that a portion of the tank can be for gasoline. I haven't discussed that quite, but I'm happy to respond back.
Yeah.
As I think we'll be coming back this week, and we've come to see that from engineering department, but, uh.
All you have to do is go to mobile at, uh, next to it at eight o'clock, and the Amazon truck will come out of the wall. There's like twenty of them coming at the same time, and they'll both just go to the stand soon. It's a lot.
The Amazon trucks.
They're right over there.
Warehouse is right there.
Right there. Now, any elevation to show a point of sight. Is that, is that what drivers? Should be inside, like, you know, just maybe take signs. All the information.
But, good question, um, and I'll discuss that with you. But we can respond back, uh, again, and, and, you know, I said it just, but, but maybe, maybe that elevation on the building. They sign back as well, provided it's allowed by some interventions. Uh, we do also have typical to a gas station to have a ID sign noted at the site. Price tax. Will there be any, um, like, uh, hot food or deli inside or strictly to give support? I know, again, another question, I don't have the answer to, to having a strap post, getting attached to. But I can find out a little bit more of that after the next meeting as well. I think. Done work for the same client, different location, and that location strictly coffee. But again, that is on the location. We anticipate customers are, it's a work. Uh, any other question? Bob, do you have anything?
I'm good.
Good?
Yeah. Yeah.
Open up the public, questions, comments, concerns? Nothing? Um, best to continue this.
I would continue this to your next meeting because there are some.
Outstanding.
Outstanding things that we should, the applicant should address prior to.
One sec, I do have a question for Bob. Um, bring it to me, David. This, see here that it's their house, they have all the bags. Is there fence looming? Is that, that? Yes, good, great question. And yes, along the, uh, eastern property line, we do have a fence that's proposed to screen. Uh, the news shop as well as the neighbor next door, and, uh, we have a lot of trees as well. Crop trees. So we have a little bit of a green, a little bit of green. I'm sorry, but. Just that's. Provided. Excellent. I hope there's nothing else. Uh, we'll continue this, uh, for the hearing for our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Get to have to go.
I need notes.
Okay. We will move on to new public hearings. NILRA Realty Corp., 165 Grassley Plain Street, Inc. Special Permit.
For those that are sitting to the left of, um, the chairman, could you make an effort to enunciate your words a bit more, just speak more clearly? The, the microphone, or at least my, my headphones are, I'm struggling to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Stage left or?
Uh, that, that would be to, uh, no, that would be stage right, I believe. So Kitty, Diane, and Spruell.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. To appear June twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, and July fifth, twenty twenty four. Public notice, the Vessel Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on July ninth, twenty twenty four. In Conference Room D of the Municipal Center, One School Street, Bethel, Connecticut, at seven P M. To hear the following. NILRA Realty Corp., for property located at one sixty five Grassley Plain Street. For a site plan and special permit to construct in addition to the existing manufacturing warehouse. The property can be found in the accessory's record as map nine, lot twenty three, and lot one forty nine. A link to review the materials can be found in the town's website. The public may send comments via regular mail and email to landuse@bethelct.gov. Property for hearing is of kids, we're building, Paul Shandley, Chairman.
Thank you. And we'll open it up to the applicants. For the record, Dyson is a professional engineer with Cartel Engineering Group, here on the half. To present the proposed, uh, site. And updated use for one sixty five Grassley Plain Street. Um, and the three parts. With the nailing set was set out, um, and as David works, uh, his magic with the screen. One sixty five Grassley Plain, uh, street, uh, the property. Is located on the west side of Grassley Plain Street. Um, and is currently occupied with a manufacturing, uh, warehousing facility. Of roughly twenty thousand square. It's, uh, uh, the property is four point eight acres in size, do you ever take? Um, and is valid on one side like Grassley Plain Street. By second lane. Property is located in the industrial park zone, United Zone, um, and you'll note that Francis Clark Circle is located south. Southern side of the line of parcel itself. Um, and the parcel developed in an existing building was a manufacturing facility. It's been there quite some time, manufacturing fabrics, which is kind of cool. I've been inside the building several times and moved. Whatever they call, muddy, constant. They're churning out fabrics, uh, some fabrics look to be very fine materials for undergarments. Other materials look, boy, you'd never want to wear a undergarment. It looks like construction fabrics, um, but, uh. The, the desire and intention is to expand the facility. Put a twenty thousand square in addition to the south side, whereas we're looking at the map on the right hand side of the building. Uh, to do two things, uh, number one would be to expand the operations. Two, uh, would be to take, if you don't, on the survey map, there are photo of. Trailers on the property and places where things are being stored and the intention there is to. All those items inside. So remove, eliminate the storage trailers and such, um, and rework the facility so that it functions, uh, better. By smoother operations, for the manufacturing, as well as, uh. Pick up the delivery of work minutes. Uh, David, can you please scroll to the next sheet? So this is the, uh, proposed site plan, uh, and you'll note again to the right hand side. Of this existing structure is where the addition is being proposed. Um, as part of this proposal too, there's a bit of, uh, the building, um, located on the west side. It's going to be removed. I think it was in addition to the building at one point in time, and the desire is to remove. Likely all of that. We've talked about keeping a, a, a small portion of that, uh, structure, but at this point, uh. It's, it's been asked to be shown to be removed. Um, as the site exists, there's really no strike parking, which is about a dozen, uh, for room for about a dozen cars. Along the second lane, uh, side of the property on the north side. Um, there are two culverts off of Second Lane, so our access to and from the site is not off of Grassley Plain Street, but off of the side of. Which, which I think is a, a benefit, uh, to this site. And it lends itself nicely to what's being proposed. Uh, for the, uh, building addition, um, we are proposing to eliminate a front loading dock. It's located right along the, uh, right along Grassley Plain Street, um, and rework. The rear of the facility, um, in a manner in such that all loading would take place from the addition. And we have room for, for six, uh, vehicles, uh, though I'm not sure that, uh. That all, all that, all those loading spaces would be required or utilized, uh, at least not at this. Uh, we've also, uh, proposed, uh, with this application to actually stripe the parking spaces and, and create. A parking area that is compliant, uh, with, with the zoning regulations with respect to driveway width. And parking space sizing, um, so we've got some parking spaces, uh, proposed along the north face. Basically in the location where vehicles park now, and then we've got several parking spaces, uh, tucked in behind, uh, the existing building. Uh, leaving this, uh, area on the west free and clear for, for truck traffic. So that pedestrians or visitors or workers aren't conflicting with the truck, uh, turning. We do have a proposed trash enclosure, uh, to the rear of the site, the building, and, um. A kind of a circular turnaround in which, uh, vehicles, uh, trucks can come in. Turn around and back in, uh, without having to utilize other portions of the site. However, um, trucks can also, uh, negotiate in a manner in which they would come in across the front and back in as well, but. We've provided a, a turning area so that all the truck traffic takes place without. Encumbering any parking. Um, to that end, um, we do have twenty-two parking spaces proposed. So a bit less than what would be required for, uh, this type of use, so for our particular client and tenant. That's the required amount, desired amount, uh, but we do, uh, David, if you could scroll to the next plan. Do have a deferred parking plan, which makes use of, you can see, um. In, in a shaded line type, the circle that's being proposed, but in this portion, we are able to fit in. An additional forty parking spaces to that sixty-two parking spaces, uh, which would be required for, uh, a building such as this. But again, I think because of the size of the equipment that's inside, it's really not cool for, for all those occupants. So anyways, we have that proposed, um, our stormwater management system has been designed to be large enough. To incorporate any stormwater from not only this smaller proposal, but also to incorporate new flows that would come from the garden. Part of the area. So we'll get the first part. Uh, you'll note on the plan. That someone wants to join us. Um, you'll note on the plan that we do have a couple of stormwater management systems. Uh, one is located to the east of the proposed addition, and that's primarily to, uh, to infiltrate the roof runoff. Uh, from the addition, and we do have another stormwater management system located, uh, to the rear of the existing building. Again, designed to infiltrate and reduce the rate of runoff, uh, to. The, uh, to the drainage system that's, that is currently addressed, uh, street.
It's a big improvement. Huge.
Huge, yeah, nearly doubling the size.
It's gonna look good.
Yeah, and, and that's the intention, uh, in working with staff, staff that requested that we, uh. Try to mimic the landscaping, uh, and, and plants and elements that were proposed and recently approved for one eighty-five. Uh, Grassley Plain Street, uh, which is directly across from Francis Clark Circle, so with this landscaping, uh, the intention is to. Kind of bring this building into, uh, into the industrial park, so it's not physically access to a local. So, you know, then lend for, for pieces look. At the southern end of, uh, of Bethel. Is prior to passing under the, the railroad trust. Um, we are, uh, working with the lighting consultants, uh, to provide lighting for our site. As we are working with the architect also, it's, 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 uh, elevations, unfortunately, this one, I don't have elevations to share. Uh, but the intention is to kind of mimic what's there. And at this point, that's, that's all I have to share or present, and I'm happy to have any questions you might have.
Um, the applicant has been working with staff for a period of. A long time, really, I would say, since not feeling the landscaping and, um, and discussions with parking situation and stuff. I've just reminded the commission in the past, especially in industrial or industrial park zone. Thought has always been to, um, parking is not needed for the existing business. Defer it so you're not creating more previous area that you kind of frown, you frown on it when it's not neat. So you can defer it as long as it's shown on a plan like the applicant showed you. You also are waiting for, um, unfortunately, engineering has been very, very involved. With other matters, um, and they have not finished the review of this application. So my suggestion is that you continue it to the next meeting. And that's really bearing and barring any glaring issues with the stormwater management system.
Just more out of curiosity, the loading docks that you show there, is that the press loading docks down that four feet?
Yeah, and it was quite tricky to make support with the, uh.
And then is it, is it exterior dock, uh, that, that you, you don't have dock doors that direct out of the building, or they, it looked like on the drawing, there was like a concrete.
Yeah, we've got a concrete gate, and it's. Like ten feet, the max way out in the building, um, and again, with the architect. They have maybe an awning, that something that covers it to provide some shelter from the elements.
The, the, um, trash enclosure, is that a testing?
No. I'm sorry, I don't need an answer for you.
No, that's, that's, that's the future thing.
Like a, like a bandage. But yeah, there's the, uh.
That's fine.
Trash enclosure will be.
That's a question. No, that's fine.
Thanks. Any comments, questions, concerns? Bob, you have anything?
I'm good. Seems like a positive, uh, improvement to the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely. Um, I have a couple of questions, sorry. The parking, uh, scenarios setup. The parking scenarios set up. Is there any happy medium between the two? Like, the impervious is kind of a moot point because you're still opening the whole area, leaving open for trucks.
Right.
So is there any thought maybe extending that a little bit? Because it wouldn't be there, and I just put like a rope in one side of cars. Employees are already parked there for the day, trucks are not going to be if the cars are already there.
People will look into that.
Like the parking spots that are still, that doesn't, that doesn't decrease your impervious very much, but you still get, you know, I'm sure, what is that, 15 years?
Well, I think, like, first, your kermit factor that might come in and have a higher density toy count that might make sense, but for, I'm assuming right now, based on what you have to park in versus what you're showing them for and what they need.
Yeah, I mean, in the times that I've been to the property, there's never been more since cars.
Right, yeah.
This is more of a deferred from me.
And granted, it's no guarantee it's going to stay that way. Right now, the number of the employees actually walk to the property.
Both my next question.
So sidewalks. Good question. You had sidewalks. You don't have sidewalks proposed. We did not cut like that. If there are sidewalks, uh
It's the industrial, industrial park.
Industrial zone.
Like the latest type. Right, so if they, I can imagine if somebody was walking, I'm assuming they're coming from the north, where all the residences are coming this way. I don't think he would be walking down Grassley Plain.
They literally cross the street, probably from the houses. Granted, it's, it's a, it's a dangerous way for a while.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But there's no guarantee it's going to And that's where I was going with the parking spaces. It works fine now, but you know, back with empty years down the road, they, they moved a bigger building and sell this to someone else. And now it's got 123 spots. That's just like
Well, correctly wrong, is that the point of deferred? Like you would have to build with that? You'd have to build that, those extra parking spots? Like if a new tenant came in or new to the, to the building department, the planning zone, they would show the new use and you would have to
Then they have to get the rest of the
That's my point of that, right?
And I will say that the point of trying to say this delicately, the point of doing the improvements that they're doing now is to eliminate what's going on there presently. All the outdoor, if you drove by there, you would see all the robbery things. So I don't want to see us encourage more parking area for the, for the trailers to
Yeah. I don't want you to think, I appreciate all the thought that's gone into this work and the directions going. Any questions?
This is going to be left open until the next meeting, I assume, because we are waiting to the engineering. As far as sidewalks, could you allow me to listen to that a little bit more for you? And I'm thinking you would better answer this next meeting. Unfortunately, dealing with the IP zone in the high zone with development in sidewalks is not something that I'm used to.
It's a, that's a conversation for a different day. But I think and you know, you run an archway, lots of people walking, the church of lights or the archer just dropped.
Down at the car park?
Yeah.
When the car park was approved, sidewalks were required. The town of Bethel chose to not pay attention to that condition of the approval and eliminated.
Oh.
I was the one that wrote the approval for the industrial park versus 35 years ago.
So yeah, that was just Yeah, conversations are different.
Yes, absolutely.
Do you want to start with sidewalk, we're going to go nowhere now, someday they
Very lightly, you've got trailers here. Oh, that's what's there now. Okay, that's why.
And once we're done, we'll continue this public hearing to our next meeting on July 23rd. I'm sorry, before I do that. Was there anything in the public?
Can we go again? Penny Hessler, 22 Spring Hill Lane. On behalf of Butterflies, I mean that literally. If I am correct, the building across the street, there was a concern about some native wildlife. And things had to be maneuvered and things had to be moved around because of that. I wonder, is that something that the commission is looking at? And for this building, considering that it is just literally across the street.
What, I'd like to be a Tony.
Can I ask, that was I correct even wrong, that was with something, there was a rock that was there and there were
Mr. Chairman, may, may I respond to this question?
Sure.
Okay, I, I believe the, the question that has been raised is with regards to the natural diversity database that is run by the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. On the abutting property, 185 Grassley Plain Street, there was identified to be the resource, as Mr. Shanley just pointed out, of limestone outcrops, rock outcrops for the northern metal mark butterfly. I, I think what, how you would want to phrase that question to the applicant is, is whether or not there are any NDB areas that overlay onto this property.
What David said.
We'll look at that response, yes.
But that basically means that the applicant will be, will send a form to the D and they'll say yes or no. And what will happen then is if there are ideas of this butterfly on the property, landscaping will be changed for the so short version.
And open up to check anyone else online with questions or comments.
I'm not seeing any other hands raised at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Perfect, I apologize. Thanks, Mrs. Hessler, for yelling out. All right, we'll continue this public hearing to July 20th.
Thank you, Curtis.
Uh, we're going to move right into our business news.
Yes.
We have a full house of commissioners. So has everyone had a chance to review the minutes from 6:25, 24?
Motion to accept the minute.
I'm just going to accept it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Refuse?
I refuse, or, sorry, sorry.
Motion passed.
You have one bill?
Uh, we have one in voice, I understand, for $1,460.15 the news time for public noticing. A motion to, okay?
Make a motion to A B Bill to the news time, just to go out, Paul just said.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Refuse? Motion passed. All right, we're going to move right into the work session for Tish Draper, Nine Button Park Road, Aprilia B. Ford's Housing. And I refuse from this application, so I'll step away and end right.
Hold on, okay. Yes, so Eric will see to that. Okay. All right, now, you'll receive the draft. And did we all read the draft?
None of us, Chair. I, I can put the draft up on the screen for those commissioners that are not present. And, and just for, uh, it, it to be noted into the record so you don't have to read it.
No, no, I, I don't think so.
No, I, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask for, it, it, I, I wouldn't recommend it be written to the record. But for those that can't see it, it just helps them to follow along.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that's just for me.
Okay, can everybody see the screen?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, Chuck, have anything you'd like to start with? Tommy Andrews.
Yes, Chuck Andrews, attorney for the commission. Yes, this is the draft decision. Based on your deliberations, you instructed staff to come up with a resolution of denial. Again, we just basically set forth the facts. There was, it's an 830G case, so it went through the burden of proof of 830G. And we emphasized the two reasons that we had, that the commission had discussed. That mainly, the first one being the failure to apply for wetlands, for wetlands regulated activities permit. There were two, appeared to be two regulated activities. One with the, the wetlands that the Apken Soil Scientist had actually identified, a small area, but, but it was wetlands nonetheless on site. And then also activity within 100 feet, within the upland review area and within 100 feet of a wetlands on an adjacent property. So that, and despite that, the applicant had not applied for a wetlands permit. And then the second reason being the failure to satisfy the health criteria to provide the information to the health department to allow it to determine the suitability of, of the site. Whether it can accommodate the septic and the effluent from the site. And so we kind of went, read through that, went through the items in the record and mentioned that. And found, you know, non, those were significant public health and safety issues that justified denial. That outweighed the need for the affordable housing provided by this, which was two units. But also in the discussion about how the advocate can address these issues. And recommended again that they, there, there is a reapplication process that you can do. And it gives, and it kind of puts a hold on the zoning when you go through the wetlands. So we recommend they do apply for the wetlands permit and also provide the information to the health department. There were some, there were some planning issues, getting the, the septic and the stormwater in the same plan. But there are also some studies in terms of the water quality, the, the water, the monitoring, groundwater monitoring during certain seasons and some other items. Investigation of the ability of the soils to accept this, of the, to accept the effluent and just outline that. So, so that's basically what the decision says. And again, it's, it's a denial that provides a guidance for the applicant of how to address the issues and move forward.
Thank you. David, do you have anything you want to add to this?
I, I have nothing to add other than I, I would recommend that this commission extended its appreciation to Attorney Andrews. He put a lot of work into this. Draft resolution for the commission's consideration on, with, with a short timeframe to work with, with respect to last week being the holiday week and the commission previous meeting only being two weeks ago. The commission's other experts, Todd Ritchie and Laura Vassil and Chris Palowski have all also reviewed this draft for any input or revisions that they thought would be appropriate. So all of your experts have looked at it, they have given it the okay for it to be reviewed and deliberated by you guys tonight.
Thank you. And I would also like to add to what Mr. McCollum just said, David just said. I read this draft, I immediately called David and I said, who wrote this? Was this Mr. Andrews? Thank you very much. Uh, so this is, this is really very well done, very articulate, very exact. And I, I think it's great, but that's me. So I'm going to open this up to the commission. Small.
So I, I agree, this is, I stick back in it, I do. For putting it together, I do want to make one suggestion, a change, which pretty much ten. The first bullet, where it talks about where a request was made to combine the drawings for the stormwater detention and sewage disposal systems. The reason, I wanted before I read, it's very brief paragraph that I want to add. The reason why I recommended that we consider this addition. It's because, in my opinion, it illustrates the attitude that the applicant's engineer had towards the commission. So I'm just going to read it now, it's in writing, and we can determine whether or not it wants to be added. The applicant's engineer justified the refusal, the refusal to combine these two drawings by stating that it would result in too much information on one page. The commissions, commissioners would be confused in attempting to study the drawing. He further stated it was difficult to match the scale of both drawings into one sheet. So as an architect in the past, I, I find this unacceptable. And I think it's important that we illustrate what the applicant's engineer attitude towards the commission and the commission election capacity or lack thereof is.
Where, where would you like this added, Mr. Braden?
So, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. It's on the eighth line. The line ends with the client to provide such plan, period. I had, and I proposed that this would be added at that point.
So, so which, which page are you on?
Page 10.
I'm sorry. Page 10?
Yes.
The first bullet.
Mr. Braden, I'm not sure if you're looking at the most recent draft. There was, there was, there should be a hard copy of the draft resolution of denial that you can use as reference.
Well, okay, I'll find that.
Do you, do you need it, buddy?
Yeah. This would go now on page five. Okay, the first indent bullet.
So, so, I'm sorry.
Correct.
Okay, so I, I believe I have the section that you're referring to up on the screen, Mr. Braden. So, so you would want the paragraph that you just read aloud to be added after the end of this sentence? Where my, where the cursor is?
I'm sorry, I did not see the first.
Uh, it's right here.
No, no.
The first bullet, right?
No, no, keep going down. Right after the word plant.
See the word plant, right in the middle there, on the other side. Yeah, right there, right there.
So.
Second sentence up a little bit, yes.
And before the health department and health consulting engineer have explained that, I think
Ah, yes, okay, I see where you are. Okay, so after the second sentence of the first bullet of item 2A2. Okay.
Are we, are we okay, David?
I, yeah, I, does, does the commission want to discuss in adding this? What Mr. Braden's trying to address with this sentence? Or do you have other revisions that you want to bring forth?
This is the only addition, and I said, this is a great document, but I thought we needed to document that with your response.
Okay, so my, my recommendation perhaps, Madam Vice Chair, pull the other commissioners for any other comments that they may have. And then we can go through them at the end to, to see if there are, if there's anything else that that needs to be done. And then we can go through them at the end to, to see if there are, if there's anything else that that needs to be done.
Hi, Ms. Ryan, Diane, do you have any comment?
I don't have comments, but I just also, for the record, want to say that I did catch up on all the meetings I missed, watched the videos online.
Thank you.
No additions or revisions for you.
Ken? Diane? And I, I, I personally think the addition is, is a good one.
And don't, don't forget Mr. Lagnard, Madam Vice Chair.
I'm looking at you. Not going to forget.
I read the draft and believe it's a fair example of what has taken place over the course of the past couple of months. So I think, and I agree with Sproul, some of that stuff needs to be in there.
Yes. After many meetings, I agree with you as well. I think that that needs to be there. Okay, so you want us to take consensus on this or?
Well, I, I would just, I would just confirm with, with the Commission that, that they all agree that, that the revision that Mr. Braden proposes to be added is included as, as part of the draft. And then if the, if the Commission doesn't have anything else to discuss, that they could entertain a motion.
Chuck's okay with that addition?
Sure. Before you vote on it, you just read it again. I think it was just explaining their rationale as to why they didn't do it because it was, couldn't read it. I mean, that was their claim.
What's, what's the exact language you want to add to it, Sproul? Would you use, use the exact language that you wanted to add?
Yeah.
All right, sure. And, and, and come closer to the microphone if you do that, just so, just so we make sure you, we can hear you. Because we're, because we're going to have to type this.
I'll leave a copy with Amanda.
He hasn't typed out, printed out. Do you want me to give you tomorrow?
Oh, excellent. Yes, that would be very helpful.
Okay.
But maybe you should read it out for the rest of the.
Still have, still have to read it in, yes, please.
No. The applicant's engineer justified the refusal to combine these two drawings by stating that it would result in too much information on one page. The Commissioners would be confused in attempting to study the drawing. Further stated, it would be difficult to match the scale of both drawings into one sheet.
Okay.
Okay, I, no, no problem adding that, those two sentences after the word plan.
Okay, so should we, should we take a personal vote for each Commissioner member?
Well, i- i- it sounds like at this point, if there's no other discussion, Madam Vice Chair, you would, you would be entertaining a motion from the Commission.
Caution to accept this draft?
That's right, with the addition.
Can we make a motion to accept the draft written up here with the addition of Mr. Braden's comments? Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I, I would, I would take a roll call, Madam Vice Chair.
That's what we're doing. Oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead. So we start counting with Sproul?
Aye.
Diane Ryan, aye.
Kitty Grant, aye.
Mike Kozowski, aye. Eric Bruck, aye.
Any person, no.
Bob Legner, aye.
Thank you, Bob. All right?
All right.
Okay, all right. Here we are.
Yeah. I'm going to have to oppose it.
I'm sorry?
All right.
What did you do?
We, we voted for the, to approve the motion. The resolution, not the resolution. No?
Yes, my, my understanding, the Commission just voted to adopt the, the draft resolution as the decision of the Commission. And that, that's the decision. It's a denial of the application. And you adopted this memorandum as the decision.
Yes.
With, with the revisions from Mr. Braden.
Correct.
Yes, yes. We're good, yes? Thank you. Okay, Mr. Stanley, would you please return? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chuck.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you very much, Diane. Thank you.
You. We will move on to the work session for Dietry Corporation, 18 Stony Hill Road. Site plans for a permit exhibition will permit text of that. Any questions? Seth, do you have any things going with us before we discuss?
Yes. I'm sorry. In regards, in regards to the text amendment, Paul and I did have some discussion that had discussed the possibility. And I believe it was brought up during a public hearing. We're consistent with what you've already approved regardless of the four stories being allowed on Route 6th Quarter. If the property is directly adjacent to State of Connecticut, I 84. I think that if you were to look at this text amendment that they're proposing, I would only feel comfortable if this was applicable to those few properties located directly adjacent to 84. My fear was to do something three stories in nature, farther down the road, a hotel per se, along Route 6. Where the Cougar, where the Dragon Restaurant is, that perch up on the hill and look down onto, I think it's Adams Drive with a three-sided, four-sided, you know, not that they would want to put a Hilton sign on the rear side of their building, but it's allowing them more possibilities to do that. So I think it's very important you can find it to a very small area.
I agree. Totally agree.
Frankly, these benefits, any applicant that'd be able to put an extra sign facing 84 with a four-story building, I'm just, just another spot for them to advertise for themselves.
I feel differently. They show from 84, not being able to see at all. You're talking about, you know, if they get that land, cutting down the trees so that they could see that. You know, today what we do is we, we make an arrangement ahead of time because it's on a sign on 84 or something. It's not like you're going to see that and then hurry up and get off exit eight. So I, I just don't see why I wanted a big change because of what, that's my opinion. I, I, you know, I don't mind having it go to the higher level of the building. But to have it be on every side, I think is okay.
Ladies and gentlemen?
They want it on four sides.
They want, they want the.
The side.
Right. On all four sides. And the four stories. The four stories is more important. Yeah, the side, the side is on every corner of the building.
Yes.
And the reason, from what I understood, the reason for it was that it was a corporate requirement when you tie into a major national hotel or something.
All of their hotels have that on every side.
They're meeting their requirements of that particular.
It's a new requirement.
And I think, I think it's not, Diane, to your point about seeing it pulling off, it is brand recognition as you're driving up and down 84 every day and you realize that hotel. But I, I understand your comments.
I mean, you know, we're allowing that then on everything.
Well, is it, is it true, if I remember correctly, that if there was a multi-tenant space, there would be allowed signs on all four sides? Yes. So this was restricted, this, a, a building that had only one tenant, in this case, would be just the one hotel.
That's correct.
And we're currently, the way it's written, we can't do that because it's two signs.
Correct.
But if there happened to be two tenants down there, two tenants could have a sign on one, two sides. Two tenants, the other tenant could have the sign on the two other sides. Yeah.
Yes.
My thought, if it was restricting it to something that borders 84 is, I'll use targets as an example. No one wants a big 25-foot target rolling, you know, against residential area. But 84 is already let anyways, so it's not going to affect light pollution or anything to a sign in the back of their building. And again, the, the height doesn't bother me. It's just if that's hammer at home, like you just said. If it was two different companies, they'd have four signs without the special permit. So we're just making it a little bit more user-friendly for, for one app, one, one person that has to.
Seth, how many suggestions do you have?
Along 84?
Yeah. Bob, Mr. Lagnard, what was yours?
I, I think even though it meets the definition of a sign, I think it's more of an icon to identify the whole building as one hotel. It's not like it's going to have, you know, hours open or sales or, you know, things like that, that you might have a billboard-type sign. It, it's more of an icon. Thank you.
Just like you said, brand recognition. And I, for this particular applicant, I just don't think that is that much in your face. I think it's.
But for this one applicant.
I'm saying for this particular applicant, it's, it's very nice.
I, I, I can agree with that. But have it for anything that goes down Route 6.
Well, we're talking, this might be the last one that actually borders 84. Then all of a sudden, railroad comes, like, the next building over is the church. I don't know if that, does that border 84? But then after that, it's all residential. So we're talking from, we're talking from 18 Stony Hill Road down to the Scaldo Building. And there's nothing else after that. So it's four or five buildings. Kind of the same.
Four or five blocks. I counted in five blocks, Diane. Diane asked the question.
It's the same, it's kind of the same restriction we put on for the four stories. It has to be on, you know, that downhill off Route 6, flooding up to 84. What really restricts it for those, that one section there. Again, but it's not against any residential. It's in the business district where we want it. I'm, I would be in favor of that with some sort of, if we do a, any, you know, the, the, the change closer to what we did for the four stories.
For that one piece of property?
No, 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 no.
Oh, you mean for all of them?
That's, that would be a variance if it's for one piece of property. The way, the way it would.
Three stories and four stories, and we made it for only that one section of Route 6.
Provided that the property is adjacent to the State of Connecticut, Route 84. I'm going to use my phone to pull up Google, if you can.
Do you want me to pull up?
Michael, can you do it?
Oh, I'll try. While we're doing that, if anyone else has any other comments about our concerns about the site plan?
Go to Town of Bethel GIS.
Mr. Kozowski, just make sure that you're sharing what's on the monitors with everyone that's on the meeting room because they can't see that otherwise.
There you go. Did I share? There we go.
At the Route 6 zone, you have to remember it's the Route 6 zone that it's applicable only.
So we're talking everything to the north of this, Route 6, between here and 84. One, two, sorry, one, two, three. That's stuck there. Four, five, that doesn't count, correct? Yeah, doesn't border 84. Six. And then that's on.
That's the church.
That's the church.
So it's, it's literally those, those, and that's the same restriction we did for the four stories.
That's correct.
Same area we restricted.
Signs in the Route 6 industrial and IP zones shall not exceed 25 feet. It should not be located above the highest point of a second story. Provided that where an entire building is occupied by a single tenant, wall signs shall not be located above the highest point of the highest permitted. That's the way, that's what we're saying. Right now it's second story.
That was wrong.
Okay. But what you're saying is if it's four stories, what this is allowing for is the four stories. Now, you could limit it even more if you wanted to. When you refer to the original text amendment, it refers to what you did, what you changed in a four-story building. In the Route 6 zone, the Commissioner may by special permit approve up to a four-story building with a maximum building height of 50 feet, provided that the property is solely used for one or more of the following hotel, motel, or motor hotel. And provided that the property is adjacent to the State of Connecticut, Route 84.
You should put that same language.
So do you want to use the same language? Would that be helpful or?
I think so.
I think so. I would agree.
You're welcome.
You all right with that?
Yeah.
Mr. Lagnard?
I'm good.
Well, with the anticipation of everybody, I mean, ask staffs there and make a resolution for it.
I just kind of put it together just now.
Well, what is that?
This would be applicable just to this small area of Route 6. I don't want to mess with the regulations as they presently exist. You're just making the exception for one use, hotel use. If it's four stories, they can have a four-sided sign. Up to the. That's what you look for. Nothing else.
Nothing.
Okay.
Do you have?
I can read this, I can read this in the form of a motion that would be helpful if you wanted to.
Yeah, it would be very helpful.
Do under section 6.3 E, attach signs. Maximum number C. Maximum number under C, two wall signs per tenant space, provided that where an entire building is occupied by a single occupant, one wall sign per facade up to four total. That's okay to leave like that because it's obvious people are not seeing signs near the building. If the sign can't be seen, it's, I believe it's not going to hurt our locations overall. Maximum height, signs in the Route 6 industrial and IP zones shall not exceed 25 feet. It should not be located above the highest point of a second story. Stories. Listen and see how this sounds. In the Route 6 zone, in the Route 6 zone, the Commissioner may by special permit approve up to a four-story building with a maximum building height of 50 feet in signage, provided that the property is solely used for one or more of the following hotel, motel, or motor hotel. Provided that the property is adjacent to the state of Connecticut. And, uh, walls should not be located above. I had it, and I lost it again. It's the, the verbiage. Single tenant walls should not be located above the highest point of the highest permitted store. Diane?
No?
That's what would be helpful if we, uh, table this and.
We could just get the reservation.
Well, you can, okay, you can table it. But. My suggestion is that you would have to table the whole eighteen Stony Hill. Because the proposed site plan is special.
Would you like to take a, um, like a, um?
Keep going forward.
Consensus?
Yes, okay, give me that and, uh.
Okay.
I had the verbiage put together, I just can't find it.
Um.
Oh. No.
Let's see the consensus, um.
Okay, I found it. I, I apologize, I truly apologize. Okay, and we, and we got, we should give this to them?
Yeah.
Would you give it to them?
Yes, absolutely.
Because they're heading towards, I apologize. I thought they were discussing, but they're heading towards making a decision. You have to nudge me. All right, so if you look at revised, I gave you a copy of what was proposed, and then I revised. All right, so in the maximum height, when we talk about signs in Route six, there's an asterisk associated with it. And the asterisk reads, in the Route six zone, provided that where an entire building is occupied by a single tenant. Wall signs shall not be located above the highest point of the highest permitted story, provided that the property is adjacent to state of Connecticut group by eighty. That's it. I apologize.
No? Got that, Scott?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, please do. So that would be in the form of a motion to approve. With an effective date. August first.
Make motion to approve the tax amendment for, uh, for the signage. For section six, about three dot times, uh, including the new verbiage given by staff. Can I read that in?
Excuse me?
Should I read it?
I read it. I thought I was doing a lot more than you guys.
I was reading. In the Route six zone, provided that where entire buildings occupied by a single tenant, wall signs shall not be located above the highest point of the highest permitted story, provided that the property is adjacent. State of Connecticut group by eighty. Uh, it'll be effective August first.
And the reason for the approval was because it needs to, um, it's in accordance with the comprehensive plan and the zoning record.
Bob?
Second.
Second.
All right. Do the roll call vote, Bob. Penny?
Yeah.
Eric? I'm sorry, Eric, you're not seeing it right now, I'm sorry.
Mike?
And I.
Yes.
Yes, no.
Yes. Motion passes for the text. Do you have a resolution for?
You asked me to prepare a resolution of approval based on the approval of the, uh, text amendment.
Yes.
All right, so I have that here too. You want to pass that out?
You need to see this, uh, Diane with enough.
Okay, I'll finish.
Great. I'll walk you through the approval. Um, number one is dealing with any reports that we receive from other departments, asking them to go through them and review them over time. Excavation fill, I always refer to the hours of operation for that, to remind the contractor. Um, number three is the standard stip that is always put in. Number four is a special permit's always filed in land records. Number five is a bond, we always do bonds. Number six is sufficient structure meeting on site. Number seven is based on, again, um, there were some requests for architectural changes in the front of the building, they were submitted at the last meeting. I still think that there was one or two concerns from public commission members to see them in the final format before a permit is issued. So we're asking for them to come back with those. Parking facilities shall not be allowed within the proposed unit, hot plates, toaster oven stoves. Um, and again, that is to discourage extended stays and things of that nature. Um, number nine, kitchen facilities was a concern pertaining to the health department and the utilities department, uh, with traps. Um, I was saying, if you ever want to do that, you have to go back. The project engineer is responsible for E and S inspections on a weekly basis, they usually do. And they also do all sign-ups pertaining to inspection as votes and, uh, plonies.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve a site plan, special permits under section four, two dot E. New construction of thousand square feet or more, four point two D, one local buildings, and four point four P. Building height on property located eighteen Stony Hill Road owned by Diet Tree Corporation, showing a common plan. Sleep in hotel development plan eighteen Stony Hill Road prepared by Di Mark Sobol Engineering dated three twenty point four. Revised five twenty-three, twenty-four with the following conditions, one through twelve, effective August third.
And then this last part would have to be, and we approve this because it means.
And we approve this because it means the.
And then you just put them in. Yeah, the last part. That's obviously, that's not here. But we, we through this because it means all the ready uses of that.
Paul?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm gonna.
Yeah. Penny, second.
Yeah.
We can take a roll call vote?
Yeah, yeah. Mike, yes, yes.
I'm like, I guess.
I'm like, I guess, yes.
Excellent. We will move on to Shree Ree LLC, one forty Green Avenue, site plan and special permit.
Yes.
Any discussions?
Yeah, I, I think we, um, went to a lot of changing, and I'm very, very happy the way they changed the front of that building and it really brought it in. Um, I would like to, and I still, I was looking forward to the parking plan before, well, I'm serious, I really am. Um, but other, other than that, it, it's going to be a great addition to the downtown.
Did, I know at the, at the, at the last year, I got caught up, for the record, uh, watched all the videos. Did, did we see a revised drawing where we dropped that course detail of the stair? Was that in there? I didn't see that.
They were, the discussion at the last public hearing was to drop the, um, corner.
Yeah.
So it's at the same.
Right, to flow, flow together.
Flow together.
Right.
With the existing.
Oh, okay, I did see that. Oh, yeah, yes, I'm sorry.
I thought we all, we're gonna make it a really nice look.
Thank you.
Not very well.
Any others down there?
Um. The reduction from what, ninety to seventy something? Parking?
Yeah.
No, it's seven, seven, seven.
Ninety spaces to seventy-two spaces.
I hope that doesn't come back to bias.
I also had a concern with the parking, uh, but I have a, uh, incredible credit to staff did that, their own parking study.
Yeah.
And, uh, use very conservative numbers, two spots per, with visitor spots included, um, you know, saying those would be there and they're still available parking. And, and I had conversations with Beth about concerns about parking. So I, I share your concern. Um, I think. That, uh. Unrelated to this issue, other issues we'll get into now, parking, but as far as this project goes, I think we're adequate parking for what we're looking for.
I get it. And I agree with Kenny too, concerned, but as, you know, he's, the property owner is unofficially allowing people to use his private property.
Hmm.
So when you take that into consideration, his application, I think it fits the department.
Long as, long as it stays there.
Well. Well.
Yes.
I, I think, you know, the parking is a good thing there, because it works, it works now with, with shared parking with several different businesses. They operate at different times, and that's the idea of shared parking. And like I said last week, it is working as it is right now, and will work in the future with these additional apartments put in. And it is a positive, uh, addition to downtown Bethel. I guess.
Do you want to see? Thoughts, Dan? Diane?
Um, Dan had brought up, uh, checking the parking at night that he was concerned about. Um, in Carter Williams years.
Oh.
Um, and you had done it during the day. I didn't.
That's correct.
You did, you did park in.
Part of women's.
So, um, wasn't. It was empty. Except for the people who live there. I mean, I'm telling you, I, I, I used to go after my DOTC meetings or these meetings, I would go at night. And so the parking lot was literally, maybe ten, fifteen cars in it, and that was it.
Okay, you're having a discussion that you've already.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
More information might be, um, accepted, I apologize.
You know, I, I, I shouldn't have.
I had a question in regards to the application.
Sure.
Um, in the police commission minutes, uh, they asked about, um, they asked the applicant to go to DOT. Ask for removal of a parking space unlocked if you're exiting.
Mm-hmm.
But they also, you also had a discussion on the potential signage, they wanted, they talked about having a sign out that says right turn only. I didn't get a clear indication of how you felt about that. And I, I thought the, the indication was that that's not a great idea, because then you're sending traffic around in a circle again. But I wasn't sure, so I wanted to ask you if you just wanted to admit what you want to do with that portion of your record.
I think it works fine the way it is.
That's true.
I agree.
I, I have no problem with it.
I asked.
I think putting the right turn only can send people down a barn.
I just needed clarification on that.
School street, um, just creating more traffic.
Okay.
But then didn't they bring up that, somebody brought up that I'm gonna get rid of the space, the tree. No, I mean, a space on the, um, um, green avenue, so you can see taking.
They're already taking some of these spaces, what way is it being done? So you want to organize the police commission's recommendation in total?
I wouldn't.
The recommendation was to ask the applicant to go to DOT, discuss the parking space, and, um, and that was basically it. But we blow up the parking space, first one unlocked if you exit the driveway.
I think, I don't have any problem with it, so. It's happening. We're going to DOT. No, I don't know, I have a problem with it, we're just now.
Do we have to approach DOT or?
Asking the applicant to talk to DOT. That's all we're asking.
I wouldn't rattle the DOT's cage in this case, because there's a lot of them come down and take more than one parking space away.
Is this for the sideline?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so. Okay, so you don't want, you don't wanna, you want me to strike that?
I, I, I would, I would stay away from that, yes. But, but.
Can you do a consensus? Do you want that portion of the approval stricken or leave that in? I'm not getting anybody.
I, I would strike it.
Raise your hand.
We're already concerned about parking.
Drive it, drive it, raise your hand.
Strike it.
Second.
All right, so strike it, can wins. All right, so that'll be, that's eliminated. References, please. All right, you asked me to do something in regards to this?
I had asked you to prepare a resolution.
All right, so I have one copy here, I'll read you the majority of the resolution, I apologize that you didn't have any copies of it. Um, it regards the site plan, the first item regards soil and erosion. Number two is that it becomes effective in the town clerk's office. Number three, we always have bonds. Number four, we always have department meetings before that. Number five, final architectural drawings for the proposed structure shall be reviewed by staff. And the commission prior to the issuance of a zoning permit for construction to ensure compatibility with the surrounding scale of the existing area. So in other words, me and Alyssa are still working on it. We did meet with them after the meeting. Um, but when it's done, it comes back to you before they stinkies, so you can have the final say, yay or nay. Um, which again, it acknowledges commission, uh, department reports, things like that. Um, we recognize the variance that the zoning board of appeals gave them. Plus, you are also given a special permit to grant a reduction of parking from ninety-six spaces to seventy-two spaces under section six two. D two of the zoning regulation that is gaining the twenty-five percent requirement of what they had due. Uh, the applicant shall submit an affordability plan for review, that's filed, remember now with DOT. Anytime you do any type of units, five or above, that you have to apply, you have to apply affordable housing component to it. Three of the units will be designated affordable units at eighty percent of the state income. And the reasons are the commission finds the proposed activity will be in performance of the plan of conservation. To DOT and the affordable housing plan in the town of Bethel, that's your motion.
My second.
I can't.
Okay, all right, I made that motion. Somebody said it, please.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, Kenny. Paul, I have a question, though.
Sure.
I would, it's to Beth, actually, uh, with, with the shared parking, because it encompasses two or three different pieces of property or lot lines. Does that become deed restricted, that it's always shared parking, no matter who owns those different pieces of property?
There is a parking reduction that. I need to serve it. I, I don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not sure, I need to serve it as a part of it. Are you sure we're thinking of? Uh, the attorney is present, can I just ask the attorney? Is it one lot or is it three lots?
Particular application, special permits run with the land.
Correct.
Yeah, the application included, I am speaking of this application, two persons, one twenty-six and one forty-three. Which we did because the building.
Overhangs to the other side of the side, yes. I recall that now.
But special permits run with the land.
It runs, I'm sorry, this is a special permit, does run with the land, but I drew blank. Runs the plan.
That doesn't affect our.
Not with the use, with the land.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second. Do roll call vote, Mr. Legner?
Hi.
Kenny?
Hi.
Uh, Mike, yes. Paul, yes?
Kenny, yes. Diane, yes.
Yes. Motion carries. Uh, we'll move into correspondence.
We don't have any correspondence.
Okay, planners report.
I have one report, that has to go with forty-two Plum trees Road. Um, David, I think I, I know the planner's report, you'll find information regarding forty-two Plum trees Road. Um, I just want to note for the record, prior to the invention of social media and the, uh. Check and forth that takes place and so on and so forth, this was part of your agenda for tonight's meeting. And hopefully it's an opportunity to clarify a lot of misinformation that's going on. And also appreciate people that have tried to break that misinformation. If you look at the, uh, just, uh, the, um. Uh, very quickly, if you look, this is a Google, um, picture of the existing house prior to it being moved. Okay, um, if you recall, you will call the application, the application was, I'm doing this real quick.
We're discussing forty-two Plum trees?
Yes, because we all want, it's hot, we want to go hot. Forty-two Plum trees Road, eight thirty G application, this existing. This existing structure was scheduled to be turned into a two-family unit. The portion of the structure that, um, um. Anyway, so it was a two-family unit to start with. Uh, during the course of development of the property, it comes to the attention. Through pictures, the applicant came in and spoke to the planning and zoning commission on the existing structure and concerns and water and damage, so on and so forth. Excuse me? Foundation, foundation damage and stuff. Um, you were, you were ready to, um. Allow for the demolition of the project, revise the permit with the understanding that the facade and the building itself was going to be replicated as best as you could see by the facade. Okay, still going to be a two-unit structure. You also amended it at the time, the porch on the side of the house. You amended it to include a garage with two windows. And that was the only change on the property. The staff is in the final phases of, um, finalizing. You'll see our notes. David, could you go to the next one? I think Amanda uploaded it for me today. You'll see our notes on the drawing, okay? So when you look at, when you go side by side, you can look at it in the Google Drive later to see exactly what is going on here. You will see that the doorway is the same, glass associated with the doorway, you're dealing with, um, eight over eight windows. Yeah. Which is what was the existing to the property. The only part that we are finalizing at this point is the placement of the shutters. Because by adding. The garage, we just want the, to make sure that the center. Better. So there's no shutters on this piece. There will be a false chimney. On the top, the, um, structure itself has got the, I, I can't see that far, but there are, I have a drawing here if everybody wants to. See the final product and the, um, shingles and stuff. I will say that, um, when this was demolished, beams that were taken from the structure itself were donated to a charitable organization. And, um, so I just wanted to clarify, so you all know. Where we're at. And like I said, I was doing this prior to today's social media frenzy.
No matter where you go.
And so just so you know, that's what's going on. Um, when the feathers are on there, I'll come back and I'll bring you one more picture involving that. If you have any questions of me regarding this, I'd be more than happy to answer. That's that. Okay? And that's all I got.
I hope this means that the word.
And that's all I have for you.
Gets out.
Mr. Chairman.
Alright.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do we have any mission comments for this evening? Shalimar?
I'm, I'm good.
I'm with you, but.
I have something. Public comment? Nancy Sodick, Too Rich, Dale Road, but this is not my comment. This is, I'm reading this for Jan Moy, who is ill and can't be here today. And so she says, quoting this, "A few me, a few meetings back, the subject of density in the T O D was raised. And there was a difference of opinion about a boat having been taken. A review of the minutes in six, uh, two thousand twenty-three, with the exception of the seven twenty-five, twenty-three minutes, which apparently they're missing, or maybe there was no meeting that day." She's, she's not sure.
What day was it?
That would be, uh, July twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. And when, when she sent me this, I, I looked myself to verify the, it's not there.
I'm lying.
Correct, correct, I'm lying. Um, anyway, it shows that the building height was amended, but no boat was ever taken on density. I urge you to consider this as soon as possible since the commission was in agreement over a year ago that it should be changed. Thank you, Jan Moy, and she's on Diamond Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul, can we table that two thousand and eight?
Yeah, let me look.
Is there any other public comment?
Yeah.
And then we'll, uh, we'll, we'll, this is a more slow play. Is there any other public comment? Anyone online?
I'm not seeing any other hands raised at this time, Mr. Chairman. Well, during your time.
Was there any other, uh, commission comments? Kenny, wanted to bring something up?
Uh, I wish it, if the next meeting discusses. I don't, I don't need to.
No.
About what?
About discussing the T O D. Just in general. Um, I've been, guess so, everyone knows I've been in.
Depends on this. It depends on your schedule. Uh, I, you know, when I look at your agenda and I see what you have going on. I really think that you guys should do it when you clear your deck a little bit.
So, so I have been in, just so everyone knows, I have been talking to Beth. Uh, I know T O D is a hot button issue. Um, and there's a lot of people that want to talk about it, both public and on the commission. Um, and I believe that we should definitely have a meeting when we have a lighter night. Um, and when that's almost the only thing we talk about.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, spread the word, invite the public to come in, tell us what they want to get, what they're concerned about. Um, we already made some changes last year regarding height, um, and, and underlying zones and such. Make sure that the public knows that we've made these changes. I think a lot of people don't realize that we have made steps, uh, to adjust the T O D. Um, go over some of the numbers that Beth has provided in the commission before, during meetings. Um, as far as schoolchildren and, and, uh, you know, the occupancy, I guess, if you want. So it's definitely, um. They're thinking about it. We're going to be definitely a meeting. Uh, just wanted to clear some stuff. Out of our, out of our plate. So I just want you to know that, that is, that is coming. Alright, and with that.
Motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
All of you?
Aye. Aye.
And your clock. I apologize to the city, um, they automatically turn off the A C.